Good evening, everyone. I will now open this public hearing. We are present tonight at these advertised public hearings to receive public comments on the two zoning proposals to amend the city's land use management code and allow for a change in the zoning of property as applied within this city. City Attorney Paul Stewart has been tasked with the zoning administrator for these proposed zonings. We will address these hearings one at a time. Ms. Stewart, I will turn this first public hearing over to you at this time.
Good evening. We've got a lot to go over tonight. I'm going to have to do this procedure twice, so if y'all will bear with me. A public hearing has been called on the City of Pendergrass joint rezoning application received by the City of Pendergrass pursuant to its zoning authority, asking the City of Pendergrass to amend the text of its land use management code and allow for a change in the zoning of property in this city. This application is a joint application from the City of Pendergrass and A R C Multifamily Group. This public hearing has been duly advertised in the Jackson Herald as required by law. I'm going to summarize the process for the public hearing as required by chapter twenty-one point three of the City Land Use Management Code. There shall be a minimum period of ten minutes at this public hearing for the opponents of this rezoning request to present data, evidence, and opinion. Any member of the city council may ask questions of the applicant or the agent of the applicant. At the conclusion of the applicant's presentation, any opponent to this application shall have a period of ten minutes as well to present data, evidence, and opinions. Prior to speaking, each speaker shall clearly identify themselves and state his or her current address. Each speaker shall speak only to the merits of the proposed application under consideration and shall address his or her remarks to the hearing body. This is not an appropriate forum for personal attacks on any person, and all remarks should be limited to any relevant issues regarding this application. Only ten minutes is allotted for each side, so I would suggest that there's a spokesperson. If there is going to be a lot of people that wish to present their side, probably need to get together and get a spokesperson, because at the end of the ten minutes, we will conclude. The city clerk shall act as the official timekeeper for these hearings. At the conclusion of the public testimony, the applicant or his agent shall be allowed a short opportunity to answer questions about testimony of the public and provide final comments and remarks. Any time devoted to such rebuttal shall be counted towards the total ten minutes of time allotted. At the close of the public hearing, section of this application, my attorney's committee back over to the mayor, officials indicate the public hearing is closed. After these hearings are closed, the applicant or his agent or any member of the public shall no longer address the hearing body in any way, including hand waving or motions for attention. We will now begin the public hearing to review rezoning application from the act. This case number is R Z eleven zero one twenty twenty-three. I'm going to give you a synopsis of the rezoned application, number R Z eleven zero one twenty twenty-three. As the appointed zoning administrator, I shall read a brief synopsis of the applicant's rezoning request. The city is a joint applicant with A R C Multifamily Group. The City of Pendergrass and A R C Multifamily Group are requesting the city to rezone property located at Glen G Road and Highway seven, uh, seven oh eight, Highway three thirty-two, from its current zoning of R one and A G R to multifamily residential and O I, office and institutional, for the purpose of developing a multifamily gated luxury apartment complex with a limit of one hundred and seventy-five units, as well as a fourteen acre city government complex, a city hall and park and government building. Future building sites will include county emergency medical services building, a city police, and fire headquarters, and city hall and a public space and public, uh, city park area. The property is located with Glen G, I'm sorry, I have forgotten my glasses tonight, so just bear with me. This such property is located along Glen G Road across from Brooks Village and next to the Blackberry Apartments. This location is located south of the town center. The site is comprised of two parcels that total approximately twenty-two point thirty-one acres. The proposed apartment site will consist of an upscale apartment complex that is to be gated and have upscale amenity packages. The developer will construct a new five thousand square foot city hall for the city, as well as construct a road to the new city hall and provide parking spaces at city hall at no cost to the city. The developer will donate to the city approximately fourteen acres for its use. This property shall be donated to the city via warranty at no cost to the city. The city proposes to construct a new police headquarters for the city police force and is working with Jackson County to construct an E M S and city fire apartment headquarters in the future. The city plans to use this space as a city park and community space for fairs, public events, and holiday celebrations. Specifically for the city, A R C Multifamily Group has agreed to design and construct a five thousand square foot city hall complex at no cost, per the specifications and at the location as agreed to by the city, to include a finished turnkey building, complete with a kitchen, all plumbing, electrical fixtures, outlets, lighting, ceiling fans, flooring, roofing, windows, two restrooms, which are ADA compliance, doors, finishes, paint, door knobs, wiring for cameras, phones, computers, and the like. This building shall include a road to the building and a parking lot strip with twenty-five parking spaces in front of the building. The A R C Multifamily Group agrees to pay for the cost of moving and reinstalling the city's three flag poles, the camera and alarm system from the old city hall location to the new city hall location, as well as paying for the cost of moving and reinstalling the Chris Reeves Police Memorial Monument at the new city hall location. This land is identified in the city's Future Comprehensive Land Uses Map as suburban neighborhood character area where high density residential development may be appropriate. To these parcels, as these parcels are located near downtown Pendergrass and are high intensity areas, this proposed development will be attractively landscaped and use high-quality building materials mandated by the city code. This project is intended to accommodate life in the new era of city of growth and development in the city. This project allows the city to focus on infill and redevelopment and ensure continuity of its development as well as, as well as the quality of development. The developer has agreed to balance tree protection by saving as many existing trees as possible and planting new ones as required by city conditions, and open space with innovative site planning. This project requires at a minimum, a minimum of a forty-foot buffer with adjoining properties to help protect existing residences and previously developed and current landowners. This property is a transitional part of our community. It is transitioning from A G R and R one to higher density multifamily dwellings and is already surrounded on several sides by residential neighborhoods and a but in existing gated apartment complex. As I have said previously in other zoning analysis, Pendergrass must move beyond the increasingly frustrating battle between development advocates and neighborhood protection and anti-development advocates. Polarizing the community further with each development decision is not the way to build a wonderful quality of life for the residents in the City of Pendergrass. No matter what the pace of growth within Pendergrass, pathway traffic from surrounding communities will continue to impact local quality of life. However, even if all growth in the city stops tomorrow, traffic in the city will continue to worsen. That does not mean that life within neighborhoods needs decline in quality. It is vitally important that we make best zoning decisions to create the best new neighborhoods as we can, as these proposed developments come before the city leaders. Growth will come, and it is the responsibility of city leaders to manage it. We do not live in a rural county country here in Pendergrass. Pendergrass is solidly suburban, and the entire surrounding areas surrounding our city will continue to change from agriculture-based to higher density residential and commercial areas in the very near future. The proposed development will fit into the character and the existing context and would add a whole quality addition to the overall area while providing new homes near the downtown core. As zoning administrator, my recommendation would be as follows. The requested zoning classification and subsequent multifamily luxury apartment, such as the hall, are in the best interest of Pendergrass. The zoning classification will benefit the City of Pendergrass' public welfare. The classification will comply with the city's efforts to promote the health, safety, welfare, and wealth of this community and maintain the character of the zoning district while allowing for the development and natural change to occur. The multifamily residential apartment and office and institutional use zoning, if approved, is substantially related to the public health, safety, morality, and welfare because this proposed zoning is compatible with the surrounding land uses and is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan as well as essential to addressing needs associated with future growth of the city such as government buildings, city parks, and recreational spaces. As such, if the city council votes to rezon this property, approval of the multifamily residential and office and institutional use zoning would be the most suitable category. Representing the Department of Planning and Development as the appointed zoning administrator, my recommendation is approval of the request to rezon this property from R one and A G R to M F R apartment and O I office institutional use with condition. At this time, we're going to hear from any persons wishing to speak in favor of the proposed zoning amendment. If you'll stand up.
I think what you said is that we could raise our hands if we thought that maybe a vote would be good.
Okay, well, I must leave your rules. Well, y'all, anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed zoning, give them ten minutes.
Very quick. Um, if you could say your name and I'd try to, uh, register. It's my understanding that the mayor and the city council are the stewards of the resources of Pendergrass. That'd be your people, your water, your roads, everything to do with the City of Pendergrass. With all of the construction that's going on here, over here, out here, I think that the city council is not being good stewards of our resources because nothing is finished. We don't know how implications of five hundred people moving in, you know, five hundred units. She said there's one person per unit moving in there, one hundred and sixty homes there, more apartments at the Blackberry over here. We don't know how that number of people is going to affect all of the resources in Pendergrass. I would personally like to see this table for eight months to a year, just to get some of these outstanding projects at least three quarters finished, to see how our resources are holding up. You know, is there proper water delivery? Is there proper sewer delivery? How are our roads holding up? How are our schools holding up? And then come back at that time and have the discussion to say, okay, everything looks good, then we can proceed. But I think it's not good stewardship to keep adding new things on, and you don't know how the foundation's going to hold if you keep adding things on. And I don't want to see empty apartments, empty homes, empty, you know, businesses, because that just invites unworthy, you know, criminal activity. So my opinion is we need to be good stewards, and the bulk of the stewardship rides on y'all's shoulders of are we doing the right thing at the right time for Pendergrass? That's all I'm going to say.
Thank you.
I'm real six five three Glen G Road. I'm opposed to the new project that the city will send Deborah on. This city hall was just recently built. I'll see a need for a new one. I don't see a need for a new fire station or police department. Only because I have the current police department records for a particular month of August. They responded to twelve hundred and fifty-three calls is what it's showing. Of those twelve hundred calls, over eight hundred of them were extra controls. That means they've thrown through the submission for verified business and called out to their dispatch center that they've checked an area. So that leaves four hundred calls that they answered over a span of thirty-seven days. The city spent money building this building at taxpayers' expense. There's no need to build a new one at this point. There's no need for a court system. I haven't pulled the records. I do have the records for the amount of citations issued, which could be a pretty good judgment. But there's no need for a new courthouse, per se, considering there were only twenty-four reports written the entire month of August. There were only twenty-one investigations, totaling a hundred and fifty tickets. That's unattested, or that I'm not certain, but a hundred and fifty were registered in a month. I think this is ample space for that. So more apartments is going to bring more, definitely more traffic to our roads there. Not, I mean, city maintained their, state maintained, maintained, and everybody knows the state's not going to do anything to help the roadways here. So I think it's complete garbage that we're going to approve anything, especially on Christmas, the day after Christmas, when I'm sure this is probably not half the people that would be here if this was tabled and sent out to next month or the following month of February when there's, but you give it, people give them the chance to come and show up. But this is just a complete waste of taxpayers' dollars. The city may be giving this building for free, but the city taxpayer is going to have to stand up and pay the price for everything after it's all said and done. And this building is sufficient enough, I think, to currently house what we need.
Don Rocker, five seventy Brother Road, Pendergrass, Georgia. I have House Bill seven forty, which was passed in the House and the Senate. Governor signed it into law about May fifth twenty-one. I don't know if y'all read it or have any idea of it, whatever, but property y'all are rezoning is owned by an individual that is part of the city. And by these, by the new charter laws and all here, they'll be unbroken and broken and broken. I'd like for you to read it, where all these people could hear what the new law is that y'all are supposed to be going by, if you would, please. Y'all not going to say anything or anything. Because by this right here, I think y'all are breaking the law. Each one of you can sit up there. And if you hadn't read it, I'd, I'd advise you to read it and go through it thoroughly, because I have, and I've had attorneys look at it. I would read it, but it'd take me, I ain't got just a few minutes, and I know it'd take me long to do it. But y'all, each one of you, get it read it before you do any voting, because it should Someone else here might have got it readed, I don't know. It's too long. They didn't read it. So I mean, I mean, but who you voted on this? I'm sure, be sure, I knew what I was voting on. Yes, sir. You can get it off the internet, but I got one, Governor, run it over when he signs it in the hall. This is the new city charter. They need to, they need to know what they're doing before they vote on this, for sure.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I got one other question, I quit forward.
It's not a question, it's just...
No, it's not a question. I just don't see it on the agenda no more, but second reading or whatever, I mean, it's, we're not following our agenda now that we're supposed to follow. Follow the order, then you change something else.
Anyone else? We will close in the public comments on the opposition to this. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in rebuttal? I'm going to turn this meeting back over to the mayor.
I now close this pub, will now close this public hearing. At this time, the second public hearing, second zoning proposal before the city. Ms. Stewart, I will again turn this meeting over to you at this time.
This is the second public hearing for the City of Pendergrass joint rezoning application received by the City of Pendergrass pursuant to its zoning authority, asking the City of Pendergrass to amend the text of the land use management code and allow for a change in the zoning of property in this city. This application is from S T K T Investments LLC. This public hearing has been duly advertised in the Jackson Herald as required by law. Again, I'm going to summarize the process for the public hearing as required by chapter twenty-one point three of the City Land Use Management Code. There will be a minimum time period of ten minutes at this public hearing for the opponents of the rezoning request to present data, evidence, and opinion. Any member of the city council may ask questions of the applicant or the agent of the applicant. At the conclusion of the applicant's presentation, any opponent to this application shall have a period of ten minutes to present data, evidence, and opinion. Prior to speaking, each speaker shall clearly identify themselves and state his or her current address. Each speaker shall speak only to the merits of the proposed application under consideration and address his or her remarks to the hearing body. This is not an appropriate forum for personal attacks. Any person in the room and all remarks should be limited to any relevant issues regarding this application. Only ten minutes is allotted for each side. The city clerk shall act as the official timekeeper for these hearings. At the conclusion of the public testimony, the applicant or his agent shall be allowed a short opportunity to answer questions about testimony of the public and provide final comments and remarks. Any time devoted to this shall count towards the total ten minutes allotted. At the close of the public hearing section of this application, I will turn the meeting back over to the mayor, who shall indicate the public hearing is closed. After the hearings are closed, the applicant or his agent or any member of the public shall no longer address the hearing body in any way. I will now give you a synopsis of the rezoned application number R Z twenty twenty-three twelve zero zero two. As the appointed zoning administrator, I'm going to read a brief synopsis of the applicant's rezoning request. S T K R Investments LLC is seeking to rezon approximately ten point four acres on Glen G Road from R one single family to M F R multifamily. The zoning change would allow for the development of seventy-unit townhomes, single families attached to development. The proposed subdivision would have a thirty-two front-loaded, uh, would have thirty-two front-loaded townhomes and thirty-eight rear-loaded townhomes. This project has a growth density size of six point seven units per acre and approximately twenty-nine percent of the site would be just an open space. Their rationale for the request is that this property is located in the suburban neighborhood in downtown character of Pendergrass Comprehensive Plan on its future land use map. These areas have a focus on supporting the downtown area as well as bolstering additional neighborhood development with a walkhole neighborhood on the edge of the downtown area. This proposed multifamily residential zoning seeks the purpose and initiative of the district for the City of Pendergrass Comprehensive Plan. The developer has a, has agreed to a minimum sixteen hundred heated square foot homes with two car garages for each home. These homes are not apartments. They are big, simple, attached homes. Also, this land is identified in the future land use plan as suburban neighborhood character area where higher density residential development may be appropriate, as these parcels are located near downtown Pendergrass and other high intensity areas. This proposed development will be attractively landscaped and use high-quality building materials as mandated by city codes. This project is intended to accommodate life in the new era of growth and development in the city. This project allows the city to focus on infill and redevelopment and ensure continuity of development as well as quality of development. This developer has agreed to balance tree protection by saving as many existing trees as possible and planting new ones as required by city conditions, and open space with innovative site planning. The developer has agreed to provide a minimum forty-foot buffer between this project and the land of property, uh, of property owners in Blackberry Farm subdivision. The property is in a transitional part of the community into the downtown areas of the city. It is transitioning from R one to higher density multifamily residential and is already surrounded on several sides by residential neighborhoods. The developer has agreed to construct side walls across the entire plan of this development along Highway three thirty-two Glen G Road to connect the neighborhoods to the town My recommendation is as follows. The requested zoning classification and subsequent multifamily townhomes that will follow are in the best interest of the City of Pendergrass. This zoning classification will benefit the City of Pendergrass' public welfare. The zoning classification will comply with the city's efforts to promote the health, safety, welfare, and wealth of this community and maintain the character of this zoning district while allowing for development and natural change to occur. This multifamily residential zoning, if approved, is substantially related to the public health, safety, morality, and welfare because proposed zoning is compatible with the surrounding land uses and is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. As such, if the city council votes to rezon this property, approval as M F R zoning would be the most suitable category. As the appointed zoning administrator and the representative of the Department of Family, uh, sorry, Planning and Development, I recommend approval of this rezon, um, to the property from R one to M F R. At this time, may we hear from any person in favor of the proposed zoning amendment to that?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and council. My name is Jeff Broderick, I'm the representative of S T K R Investments, and we are the applicant for this project. My partner, Rob Stegall, had made a presentation in the first reading, and that was very good synopsis, so I don't want to go into anything repetitive of that. Just wanted to point out a couple of things. So the minimum square footage for the heated space is actually fourteen fifty, and there's a revised set of conditions. The sixteen hundred was more appropriate for single families attached. Since these are multifamily attached, fourteen fifty would be the minimum, but it would go up from there. There'd be several models, so that would be the smallest. In addition, this ten point four acre property with the rezoning to the M F R multifamily would allow ten units to the acre, which would actually be eighty-four units. We have agreed to limit the units to seventy, so we're giving up fourteen units under the zoning to allow for greater open space within the project. With that, I'd like to reserve the rest of my time for either questions or rebuttal.
Anyone else in favor? We will now hear from people, any person in opposition to this application?
Hi, this is Amber Litter, Pendergrass.
Hi, this is Amber Wood of Pendergrass. I just have a question for you guys here. Can I get a show of you from the people that are against this? And then my plea is that you guys will vote for citizens, how we feel, consider us, and don't, the man hiding back there that owns the property and that we're worried about there, don't vote for him, vote for all the citizens, please.
Anyone else?
I've stated my name once.
Wait, this is...
Six-five-three Glengee Road, Adam Wells. So you said that, I'm sorry, Mayor, I said that you were acting as behalf of the zoning coordinator tonight, correct?
I'm acting as the zoning, yes.
Okay. So was that zoning, what you read out that you were agreeing with, was that your words or was that the other zoning coordinator?
No, it was mine.
That was your words that you agreed with? Okay, that's what I need to clarify.
David Hager, 176 Glengee Road, I'm right across the street from you. Again, I brought it up last week, or last one that we had, basically, the health and safety. You guys talked about that, repeated it constantly with the health and safety. 332 is a nightmare, the traffic's tough, 85 gets shut down, 332 gets trapped. It's great to see Pendergrass PD out there patrolling it, but people see that speed limit sign like a eye, it's hard to beat. So they constantly fly through, the trucks fly through, even the trucks, the cement trucks, and all the other trucks doing the development tier slider. So if our health and safety matters, then you should be considering those trucks flying through and actually get somebody to maintain that road. If you talk to DOT, they don't want to control it. Talk to the city, they don't seem to want to control it. So somebody needs to control that road before we put more stuff on that road. Thanks.
There again, I want to reiterate, think about the, the resources that are needed to run all these new developments and everything. I'd like, with the other one, I would like this to be tabled, you know, eight months to a year, just to see how many of these things are getting built and getting done, people moving in. Once we see that, then build more. Because you want to build on a solid foundation, you don't want to build on shaky ground of the unknown. And this is all unknown because it's new, there's nobody there. So you don't know what, what's going to happen. And that's just my, that's my fear that if we don't manage it properly, manage our resources properly, we can become another silver ghost town, you know, the gold, from the gold day. People came in, built, you know, something happened, people left, and then you're left with a shell. So I'm just asking, just to think about the resources, manage your resources, and make sure that we're building on a strong, solid foundation. And right now, we don't have that foundation finished because there's still so many things
Anyone else?
I am Clark Rainbow, 108 Danny Allen Street, Pendergrass Township, and I'm not a history buff too much, but we the people, we the people, people of Pendergrass would like to be heard. And you saw I had raised a hand just a few minutes ago. Okay, where's the people that want all this stuff done? We the people do not want it done. If it's done later, with more time to think about it, we might consider that. But we the people in this country, United States of America, we the people should be considered. I just ask that you really, really do that.
My name is Brenda Lee Field Smith, I live in 238 Mount Creek Drive. Little bitty road right off 332. I'm a retired healthcare worker of 47 years' worth, and the first thing that comes to my mind is first, do no harm. I see every day a school bus coming down my little street, and other cars trying to go up that street, and it's not wide enough for those two vehicles literally to pass one another without somebody giving one way or another. People's mailbox has been like that. My mailbox has been down five times. City had this when we used to have it. Pressures, they had to put it back. Anyway, here's, here's my thing. I'm watching all this growth, and I've been here 13, almost 15 years, but my family's been in this area for decades. 332 has, it's a high impact rhythm, and I liked what the fellow said, when 85 is shut down, that is a major threat. You've got a brand-new elementary school that's going to open, I think it is in '24. You've got a middle school and a high school sits right over there that already the Jackson County Sheriff's Department has to be there every day to regulate traffic, trying, just trying to get up and down that little road. I don't know where you're going to put all of these people because each of these people, each household represents usually two parents and usually some children. You've got schools that are already having to use portable buildings to provide classrooms. When they built those new houses right across from us, they're on Mount Creek, they're on the, they're on the right side. On the left side, they came through on our side and put in a sewer system that dumps off, goes up to, has to be pumped up field, so they said, up there by the, whatever that subdivision is, right there on 332 below Blackley. We were not allowed to tie on to that sewer, so we still had to run on, you know, our set system. But yet, it just, it just seems to me that we're not looking at the infrastructure here. I have one word about infrastructure, but I watch them on there on Mount Creek where they're going to make that entry going into that, where the multi, those homes are being built. And, and once they went in there, I mean, they ripped down every tree, every shrug, every leaf, every deer, raccoon, opossum, rat, deer, anything, rabbits, anything that can move away, transplanting over toward the rest of it. I don't know how many of people on, on my side, we've got to get, you know, perhaps a school pot and stuff and talk about, you know, we're having called set control systems, we have, you know, opossum sitting on the back porch eating the cat's food, you know, there's just multiple, multiple things that go on. And, and I'm looking at quality of life. Yeah, I'm at the end of mine, but there are lots of people that I represent here, or I hope I represent, that are bringing young families here, they want to be, they want a nice quality of life because they're working very hard to keep all these dishes in the air. So no disrespect to those developers, but that's their, that's their job. But had I done my job, and some have done theirs, there'd be a lot of, a lot of dead folks. Because you've got to look at the whole picture, you can't just say, oh, man, that's a pretty piece of property, and that would make them, you know, here we go, let's put 70 townhomes over here, and those 70 townhomes have got two cars apiece, so you've got 140 cars on the ground in addition to what we've already got here. So please, do consider your citizens, and thank you. Thank you.
I just need to say something on behalf of Blackberry Farms.
Okay, the 10 minutes is up, everyone.
Okay, well, I'm just going to go ahead and say my name, Ben Wilson, 256 Blackberry Lane. I have not heard a single thing about a gate for our community. The developer said that they were going to give us one. I haven't seen it written, I haven't heard anybody say anything about it. And just on behalf of everybody here, we don't want it, and, you know, not just because I live at Blackberry Farms, you know, I don't want to come out of my neighborhood and have apartments right there. I don't want to come out of my neighborhood and have apartments right here. So, and if we got investors coming in to build this, who's to say an investor can't come in and buy all of those and then run out? How are we going to stop that?
And now, yes, try, anyone speaking in rebuttal? I think that, did you want to...
Yes, sir.
All right, well, I will turn this back over to you, Mayor.
I will now close, I will now close the second public hearing. I'm going to give a five-minute break, and then we'll start the city council.